I will call the Monday, September 11th meeting of the Verona Common Council to order. We will begin with the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next we'll have the roll call. Ms. Clark, please.
Alderperson Diaz.
Here.
Alderperson Doyle.
Here.
Alderperson Gasko.
Here.
Alderperson Linder.
Here.
Alderperson McGilroy.
Here.
Alderperson Ricky.
Here.
Alderperson Steiner.
Here.
Alderperson Touche is absent and excused.
We do have a quorum, so we will proceed with the meeting. Thank you for being here this evening. Under public comment this evening, I know we have some people here that were at the Plan Commission meeting last week, and Plan Commission, we had a number of public hearings. So when people were going to speak, they spoke under that specific topic when we got to the agenda. So I just want to make sure that everybody understands tonight that the public hearing stage is over on that part of the process. So if you wish to speak, it's now during public comment. So now is when we would want you to come up to the front, introduce yourself, your name and address, make sure you sign up, there is a sign up sheet on the podium, if you would do that. But again, we don't want anybody to miss out on an opportunity to speak. So if you're planning to speak tonight on any agenda item, it would be now at this point, not when we get to that item on the agenda. So hopefully everyone understands, and I didn't make it more complicated. All right. So public comment. If there's anyone that wishes to speak, we would ask you to come forward now, please. Is there anyone that wishes to speak?
Good evening. Thank you for listening to our comments. I'm Joe Tucker. I live on Shady Oak Lane in the town of Verona. I have a couple of comments, and first I'd like to give you a modified copy of a petition that was submitted last week to the Plan Commission. It's now been signed by about fifty-five to sixty neighborhood residents and City of Verona residents. It's been signed by nearly sixty percent of the property owners within the boundary that's been drawn around the northwest neighborhood. And those signatures represent nearly forty percent of the land area. So the area shaded in red, when you see this, is the land area represented by people who have signed the petition. And if it isn't in red, as I said the other day, that doesn't necessarily mean they're for or against. It just means mostly that we didn't get to talk to everybody and we don't know how they feel. The petition is actually titled Legends End Opposition, but if you look at the points at the top of the sheet that people signed up to oppose, you'll see it goes a little deeper than that. It's definitely people saying that they think annexation and development of the Legends End parcel is very undesirable, and they feel the neighborhood would be negatively affected by that. I think it also reflects people saying they want a rural character for this area, not tightly spaced city subdivisions and commercial development. I'll hand that over to somebody in a minute. My own comments and questions are these. First of all, the published Northwest Neighborhood Plan incorporates and almost seems designed around a dense development on the PanCapitol parcel of land. That project is a massive, high-density, tall urban development that would be large scale for many major metropolitan areas. It will surely block either the Ice Age Trail corridor or the Trail vistas, as well as adding additional development pressure to the land west along the PD corridor. I think it's very inappropriate in size and land use for the rural character of the area, and it doesn't belong there. It also seems like direct competition for existing Verona downtown businesses, and it's hard to see a point or benefit to that. So my question is, why don't you consider doing projects like Legends Edge within the existing city boundaries, rather than pushing the boundaries out? My second comment is that all of us benefit from the rural character of the land in the northwest neighborhood area. The town residents benefit, the city residents benefit, Epic and its employees benefit, people's children and their children's children will benefit. It's beautiful glacial terrain, good farmland, and it contains the proposed corridor for the Ice Age Trail. You could help this property stay low-density and rural in character, yet there's no significant consideration in the Northwest Neighborhood Plan currently for green space, open space, farmland, or the Ice Age Trail corridor. I'm asking you whether everyone would be better off if the city set aside this plan and cooperated and collaborated with the various stakeholders, many of whom had no input until very recently. And please, if you do that, don't rush the process to suit the schedule of a particular project. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak? Is there anyone else that wishes to speak?
Good evening. My name is Ellen Khalifa. I live at 1210 South Whitney Way in Madison. My husband, Saad, and I are business owners in Madison. We've owned businesses at TCBY Yogurt on Odana Road, and we currently own the Steven Blue West Coffee Shop. And we're interested in participating in the Legends Edge development, and we're looking forward to being part of the development and living in the community. And so I'm here to represent the future of Verona and the people who will be moving here, and how the community is going to grow as a part of the Epic development already, because Epic itself has already taken a certain type of nature from the community. And so this is a continuation of that development and will push Verona into the next generation. And there will always be an agricultural nature to the community because it's part of the development and incorporated into the design. So I just wanted to add that and our interest in the development.
Thank you. And for anyone that speaks, please make sure that you fill out the sign up sheet, if you would. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak? If so, you can start coming forward.
I have a petition here in support of the Legends Edge. Should I just leave that here?
Just give it to Adam there.
So I thought a really good point was brought up, that not very many people in the surrounding community has really had any say in what's going on with this, because we haven't really, you know, had a discussion with it.
I know who you are, but can you introduce yourself for everyone else?
I'm Zach Kerlock. I live in Shady Oak Lane, Verona, Wisconsin. And I think that the reason we're here tonight is for the Northwest Neighborhood Plan, and we're setting a benchmark for what can happen on this property. So establishing parameters for what can happen, I think, is the first step in that communication with our community. And I think that's the most important thing. I just wanted to address a couple of things that were brought up. As far as the land use, dealing with the topography and keeping the rural nature of the site, this is, you know, part of the problem, because we haven't really had time to talk as a community with this. It will be built into the topography of the land, cascading down as the land does. And a very important point is that it's going to be underneath the tree line, so this isn't an obtrusive, you know, mass on the property. This is something that's tastefully being built into the project, into the land. The Ice Age Trail is to be unaffected. This is not going to be blocked, per the plan as the way it stands. As far as affecting the businesses in the local community, there are studies that we'll also share, that there are large unmet demands for grocery hotel and other things that are going to be put onto this development. And then my last point was about the topography of the project and how it's going to be largely unaffected by the way these buildings are put in, because they're built with the land, not built on top of the land. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak?
Mayor Holkimer and members of the council. My name's Joe Winnicky. I live at 412 Edward Street in the City of Verona. And I'm here to speak about the Sugar Creek Commons development. I'm a little concerned, because I see this development as one of the best things that could have happened to Verona in years and years outside of Epic. I say that because I've lived here my whole life. I remember when Saint Vinnie DePaul was Harrington Chevrolet. I remember when the Zurbachan property, Mr. Jim, ran a car wash. I remember when the Chinmi Restaurant was called the Torque. I remember when the Avenue Auto Clinic didn't exist. And I remember where the car wash was, or is, and that was the Milk Depot Convenience Store with its gravel parking lot. And a place where some people I know, and probably my twin brother, used to buy beer at a young age. Saying that, that area needs help. This city, in recent years, has spent a whole bunch of money on a TIF to create the best project in the history of this county, and one of the best in the history of this state in Epic. This community just spent $4 million on what I would have to say is good-looking, but cosmetic changes on Main Street. I was on the city council when we created the first TIF district in Verona. It was for cross-country heights. At the time, the TIF law did not allow for anything but basically one development, and that was for urban blight. You know that, John. The only blight over there was maybe once in a while corn, because there was no blight, there was no urban development, there was no decay, but it was a good project for the city, and a lot of people benefited from it. Now, fast forward to 2017. In 2017, we've got a chance to get rid of multiple things with a couple of negatives. I will give it that. But multiple things that I think help this city move forward. One is to create a gateway from the west into Verona, not just downtown. We speak too much about downtown. But go through this community and look at it and say, we have a chance to come from the west, including our best community sponsor in Epic, and create something nice. Second, if anybody doesn't know this, and I think you all do, there's a bunch of environmental remediation that needs to be done in this project. And the only way it can happen, the only way it can happen, is if the project is big enough to support what I assume is a several-million-dollar remediation. And you can't do that by just saying, let's just get rid of the truck stop and put something there. And, one third, we finally get rid of the damn truck stop. I'm very serious about this. I've lived in that area my whole life. I have no dog in this fight. I'm not involved with anybody. But it is time for this to happen. I'm told the vote on this could be close in two weeks, when you do the actual vote. And I had a chance to come over tonight. But please, look at where this city is going. Look at where the future is, and say, we have one area in this community, in my opinion, that is actually somewhat blighted. And it's right there. So please, I think it's in two weeks you'd be voting on this, but when that time comes, please support this action. Thank you.
Thank you, Joe. Anyone else wishing to speak?
Good evening. Kurt Maurer with Commercial Horizons. We are the development partners with Festival Foods on our project. And we have our whole team here, so when our agenda item comes up, if there's any questions, we're here to answer them for you.
Great. Thank you.
Hi. Dave Schutz, Oak Hill Court, Verona, Town of Verona. We were reminded last Tuesday night by the Plan Committee that this annexation is not necessarily the Legends Edge development. However, I believe that without that development, we would still be on a five-to-ten-year path for that land to be developed. This development has all the buzzwords: massive shopping center, grocery store, medical and daycare. The online description continues by saying, development is being modeled after Aspen, Miami, Vancouver, and even Menlo Park, California. In case you're not aware, Menlo Park is surrounded by San Francisco Bay, Talo Alto, and Stanford. Quite the comparison to hometown, USA. These words are not for the Town of Verona residents who this development will directly impact, or even to the City of Verona, who the developer is asking to become the enabler, but to investors in New York, Vancouver, and probably even Menlo Park. To approve this annexation and development raises the appraised value of the property from close to, I would guess, $100,000 an acre, based on sales of Epic property, to probably millions of dollars per acre. An appraisal that can be shopped, not supported by market needs, but by the City of Verona endorsement. There's an adage in real estate that goes, retail follows rooftops. And it means, when enough people live in an area, store owners and operators soon swoop in to sell goods and services. Grocery stores require thousands of rooftops and tens of thousands of people within a two-to-three-mile radius. I've done a development with hundreds of thousands of square feet of retail and a 60,000-square-foot grocery store. And in my opinion, especially with Millers and Festival Foods, the chances of a grocer swooping into this cornfield in the Town of Verona is close to zero. But it's a buzzword that sells. I think the same is true for, quote, "massive shopping center," especially with the trend today for online shopping and stores leaving brick and mortar. Look at Sears, for example. I don't doubt that you can find somebody with the needs of Epic to sell another hotel lot, and maybe even an apartment lot. But does that warrant the annexation and complete transformation of our community? I hope not. I've said it before that the residents of Town of Verona have suffered ever since Epic opened their doors, with an infrastructure incapable of handling the demands. Shady Oak, Woods Road, Country View, and others are no longer safe for walking or biking due to Epic employees and the constant stream of hotel buses from Madison and Middleton. These residents in the Town of Verona don't deserve another development, at least until all of this infrastructure is improved, and without long-term city planning. Thanks very much.
Thank you.
Hello. Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you today. My name is Jeffrey Borman, and I live on Shady Oak Lane. I was here last week when we talked about this plan with the Planning Commission. And we heard last week of the geological and topographical significance of this land. I believe in your files, you should have a letter from the mayor of Madison outlining the importance of this area and the Ice Age Trail, and how it's very important for this area to be preserved. I think also, last week, we heard about the significance of the forest land, which I understand, and I was informed last week by a representative, again, from the city, who told us that outside of the arboretum, this area of forest in the zone that is dedicated to this neighborhood plan is the largest swath of forest land outside of the arboretum. The rich and fertile farmland support dairy farms. They support agriculture in the area, and those will also be lost. We heard last week about the desire to preserve the rural character of this area. Even Epic has expressed this concern about keep preserving the rural character of the neighborhood and the community that surrounds the Epic complex. To develop a plan that's consistent with the existing neighborhood, which consists of farms and single-family homes on multi-acre lots, this is the desires that we heard from the community members last week. I've spoken with residents in the community, and no one wants this neighborhood plan. I've spoken with downtown business owners. None of them want this plan, of course. It would infringe upon their businesses that they run in the downtown area. The only people who benefit from this plan are a single family, and that's the family that owns the lot, fronting PD. This plan is a case of the tail wagging the dog. Adam Sayer, in conversations with me, has told me that this is a developer-driven plan. This plan would not exist had it not been for this idea of the Legends Edge complex. There's been no independent study that would suggest that this is a sound investment, that this is a sound plan. There's been no independent study that would tell us what the implications are going to be for traffic, what the implications might be for the light and noise pollution, which are already worsening due to the installation of numerous lights that the city installed around that traffic light there. It doesn't also help that they tore down all of the evergreen trees and moved those off, so we lose that natural, you know, shading that we had from all of the lights. Why should we invest in a second downtown and encourage this sprawl when we need more investment and development in the Verona's downtown, this true downtown here in the area that we're sitting? And so it left me with a lot of questions, such as, and I'm hoping that perhaps you might be able to address some of these questions tonight. Why is there no area designated for conservation or for preservation? How can the plan be adjusted to accommodate the Ice Age Trail corridors requested by the mayor of Madison? If the approval of the Northwest Plan is not a de facto approval of the Legends Edge project, will the Legends Edge proposal be presented and approved separately, in the way that other new developments are to the Plan Commission and to the public? And if the Legends Edge plan will not pass through the same process as other developments, please explain to us why. With the exception of one small area currently serving as a driving range, why is only one property owner allocated commercial development privileges? Perhaps other property owners would consider building a hotel or multi-unit housing structures down the street from Epic on our own properties, allowing only one developer this right smacks of impropriety. What about the endangered species note in the Northwest Plan? What are we doing to accommodate those endangered species? How will their habitats and survival be ensured? If the project is successful in establishing several restaurants, bars, yet another grocery store in addition to the ones that these gentlemen have proposed, an ice skating rink, what will be the impact on the downtown businesses? If the project is unsuccessful, are there provisions for removal, like these gentlemen, who have proposed the grocery store, had to abide by, that a removal by the cost of the developer of the proposed larger buildings, including the ice skating rink, the grocery store, and the hotel? Are there provisions that, if the project is unsuccessful, that at the developer's cost, those would be removed? Why not consider a neighborhood plan that is consistent with the existing community, which consists of rural land, single-family homes on multi-acre lots? This is not something that is unusual in this community. This is what this community is based on. There are similar developments that have enjoyed great success. Just look down the street at Hawk's Landing. That's built on a similar corridor off of M. Why wouldn't a similar project work here, instead of these mass seven-story structures, hundred feet tall, you know, clouding our views of the rural landscape? Why not have something that's more consistent in a neighborhood plan that would be consistent with our neighborhood? Thank you for listening to me. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Hi. I'm Love Day Hurling, 4033 Barlow Road, Cross Plains, Wisconsin. Good evening. Tonight, I'm representing my family, who own 40 acres of land on Woods Road. My grandparents purchased this land over 40 years ago, and it's currently held as the Cowling Revocable Trust, for which I am the trustee. With the expiration of the boundary agreement between the City of Madison and the City of Verona, and the adoption of the new boundary agreement between the City of Verona and the Town of Verona, I am now interested in moving to the next step and determining best uses for our 40 acres. I have met with staff and engineers and support the neighborhood plan and the proposed uses on our 40 acres of land. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Kenneth Cho. I am in support of the Legends Edge project. I am a board member of the Zabaton LLC Restaurant Group, based out of San Francisco. I also grew up near Menlo Park that this gentleman referred to. I guess to make a point that you don't want this area to be like Menlo Park. What's interesting is, when I moved to Madison, Wisconsin for law school, this area reminded me a lot of the peninsula, a lot of San Francisco, a lot of the beauty surrounding San Francisco, the coastal, the woods, the hills, the mountains, and the trees that are just, the trees that cover Palo Alto and Menlo Park. It's not a dense area. It's a beautiful area, surrounding one of the best universities in the world. And because of businesses, because of the companies in the area, technology and the growth of that area, it attracted people, attracted diversity, it attracted restaurants, it attracted, it made the area better, it made the area beautiful. Now, this project that the Kerlocks and that Zach mentioned in this area is a thoughtfully designed development to work with the area of Verona and to work, to benefit both the community and to not infringe on the environmental concerns of this area. The reason why I'm, my role in this project is to bring, is to enhance the food and beverage, the food and beverage atmosphere, the food and beverage options in the Verona and the surrounding Madison area. With our team, we're bringing, we're bringing bakers and patisserie chefs from some of the best Michelin restaurants in New York. We're currently talking to the executive chef at 11 Madison Park. I'm part of a restaurant group that is opening two restaurants in San Francisco, highly anticipated restaurants, among one of the 10 most anticipated restaurants in this country. And what we're trying to do here is we're not trying to push downtown restaurants, or bars, or businesses out of the market. That's not what we're trying to do. We're trying to enhance the experience and enhance the needs of the people in the greater Madison area and those that live in the city. And I think we can do that. And I think we can do that because of this thoughtfully designed development. It fits. It works with the area. And if you haven't looked at the plan, it's not like Shanghai. It's not like Seoul. It's not like a major city. And we're not putting some massive sterile structure in the middle of a prairie. This is a very thoughtfully designed project that works with the environment, works with the topography. I've also mentioned, I've also listened to I've also mentioned, I've also listened to the people that oppose this project, and there's a lot of talk about competition, about the concerns of the downtown area, and concerns that this is going to hurt downtown business. I think there's enough demand here to open up more restaurants and to open up more retail businesses. And this is America, we're not Russia, we're not China, we're capitalist, we're premised on ideals of opportunity and options, okay? I mean, to preclude, to preclude other businesses because you're afraid that it may or may not hurt some establishments downtown, I think is against the spirit of our country. And the point is, it won't, because the demand is there. We're, it's not a mutually exclusive or a zero-sum relationship, we're only here to enhance the lifestyle, enhance the experiences for the people in this area. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, ladies and gentlemen of the county council, neighbors and friends. My name is Kirill Owen, I live on Shady Oak Lane in the town of Verona. And I want you to picture for yourself, driving west on Highway PD, just after Woods Road, the view to the southwest opens up. You're driving through what was a broken dam in the Ice Age thirty-seven thousand years ago, and is now the gateway to Wisconsin's deservedly famous Driftless area. Ahead of you lie the sand and gravel beds that washed out from the glacier, now deep in the soil, that's some of the richest and best farmland in Dane County. Those sand and gravel beds filter the surface waters that run off the fields and the upstream ridge, and they help to protect the groundwater and the Upper Sugar River. The ridge itself is a glacial end moraine with remnant oak savanna and some prairie areas. The woods on the end moraine comprise one of the largest contiguous hardwood forests in Dane County, second only to the arboretum. Those woods are home to wildlife, like deer, turkey, fox, and coyote, to rare plants like orchids, to ephemeral spring ponds that host amphibians and reptiles, and to bird populations that include pilated woodpeckers and horned owls. They also provide homes, cover, and waste stations to the over one hundred native and migrating bird species that I've personally observed in the last sixteen years there. The woods also serve as the lungs of Dane County, helping to sequester carbon and keep our air clean. The moraine ridge, its outwash gap, and the view shed along PD are significant geologic features, and that's why this area has been included in the future development plans for the Ice Age Trail. I'd like you to consider the City of Verona and its relationship to the Ice Age Trail, which is planned to continue through the area. The Ice Age Trail is not just important to Verona, or to Dane County, it is the jewel of the Wisconsin State Trail system, and is of national importance on the level of the Pacific Crest and Appalachian Trails. The Ice Age Trail runs right through the City of Verona, and deserves to be a central factor in the city's plans for its future development. The proposed northwest planning area and the Legends Edge development will severely limit Verona's ability to protect an irreplaceable view shed, and will permanently mar an extraordinary landscape. I urge you not to approve this expansion that is being pushed through with unseemly and unnecessary, hello, did we lose this? Thank you. I urge you not to approve this expansion, it is being pushed through with unseemly and unnecessary haste, and to disregard for the city's own well-thought-out planning and regulatory strictures. We have the chance to build a vision for responsible, appropriate, innovative, and sustainable land use, rather than to repeat the suburbanization mistakes that have been made in the past. Verona could plan for becoming not just hometown USA, but rather Ice Age hometown USA, the gateway to the Driftless, and a model of intelligent city planning. Verona can have plenty of opportunities to get this right. Please do not act in haste and get it wrong. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Joe Fiala, and I live on Timber Lane here in Verona. I grew up here in Verona, went to school here, and played hockey for the high school. I then went to play college hockey out on the East Coast for Kuna Piac. While I was there, I finished my undergraduate degree in three years in entrepreneurship, and I finished my master's degree in one year. I was able to do that because the Kerlick family allowed me to do internships the past two summers, which allowed me to get ahead in school and graduate early. This family gave me opportunities that I previously would not have been able to have, and I believe that this family is going to help improve Verona and give us opportunities that were previously unimaginable. Now, they've given me the opportunity to work full-time and be in charge of business development, and also in charge of the next wave of interns, as you can see in the back. And I believe that this family cares, and I believe in the Legends Edge development. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Robert Ellis Bowe, I'm known as. I live at twenty-nine seventy Osmondson Road in Seminole Hills in Pittsburgh, and I'm in the Verona School District. All three of my children went through the Verona Schools and graduated, and are now done with college, I have a girl at Edgewood still. I moved to Pittsburgh where I live because I was in Verona School District. I got involved with the community, I coached hockey for here for thirteen years, I supplied all the labor to build your Little League diamonds, all my guys did that, for free. I now, I'm good friends with the Kerlocks, but I, the last ten years, I've leased their land for hunting. There's sixty-five in front and the forty in the back. It's kind of hypocritical, because the land to our south of the forty, to the west of the forty, and to the east of the forty have all been slashed out and logged by people opposing this thing, but they're still worried about the environment, okay? I'm a developer, I'm a carpenter for thirty-two years, I've owned my own business, I've worked on projects in Philadelphia, Florida, built eleven bars around the US for the Fortney Group out of La Crosse, and I've seen good developments and bad developments. This is a great development. I worked on a development in Lake Mary, Florida, which was awarded the number-one development of the year for the national developer. And this is like cutting-edge stuff, and they're trying to like cripple these millennial kids you got working on at Epic. You got ten thousand kids out there making seventy thousand a year, that's seven hundred million dollars, and they're all going and living in Madison, it's crazy, because you guys are, you need to keep some of this money in Verona. You guys captured, five percent of that money is thirty-five million dollars to this community, and that's all I want to say. Thank you. I support Legends Edge.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Caleb Altis, I live at five-eight-four-one Scarlet Tribe in Pittsburgh. And I grew up in Verona my whole life, I went through the charter school system, graduated from high school and everything, and I recently graduated from UW-Madison. And to kind of speak to Bowe's point, I want to give this from a point of view of a young professional, and, you know, I had a job offer from Epic, and when you evaluate the housing situation in Verona, it's not very appealing to a young professional. And like you said, as it stands right now, you have more than ten thousand people actually working there, making a very good wage, going back to Madison, bringing all their business back to Madison, all their grocery, all their gas and everything, and that's not being contributed to Verona. So I think it's very important that you bring that demographic into this town, because it's only going to help it continue to build. For that reason, and also, you're going to keep a skilled workforce in the area that could help our businesses locally, and even start new businesses downtown here. So I think it's only going to advance Verona, and I support the project, and I hope you guys too. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council. My name is Luke Lastico, I live at eight forty-seven Harper Drive here in Verona. I'm a new member of the Verona community, and, you know, a big reason that I moved to Verona is, you know, starting a family, I've got a young, young family, and schools played a big part of that, but also the Verona community. And I understand, you know, that was the big draw for me. I didn't have any interest in living in downtown Madison. Middleton's a nice place, but Verona was where I decided to be ultimately. I, I'm in support of this development, I feel that on both sides of the aisle, there's a lot of things that need to happen, and my hope is that we can work together here and come up with a solution that will hopefully, you know, benefit everybody involved. I think it's a huge opportunity for the City of Verona to, you know, complement what's already established with the Epic community, and I think that this project, you know, as long as everybody does their due diligence on it, and they, they think through, you know, what is going to be done or accomplished on this parcel of land that is so important, I just, I feel like it's a great opportunity for, you know, what the Kerlocks have in mind, they've done their due diligence, they spent ten years, you know, trying to come up with, you know, what they have presented to everybody here. Doesn't mean that that, I don't think that they're willing to work with everybody to make some changes or some tweaks, and I, and I hope that we can, you know, hopefully find a middle ground that works for everybody. That's all I have to say, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, and the rest of the representatives, my name is Jay Drenz, I live at ten twenty-five Gateway Pass, accompanied by my wife Paula. We've been residents of Verona for fourteen years now, with kids who are both in the high school, one freshman this year and a, and a senior. Paula and I decided to move to Verona from the southwest side of Madison, in hopes to find a place where we could raise, raise kids, in a safe environment in a school district that we knew was excellent. And in every way, our fourteen years have proven that our decision to come was the right decision. We've been involved at different levels, with different school events, within some of the sporting events here in town, and it has been an exceptional experience over the years. However, the one thing that has struck us is that hometown USA, as quaint as it is in many ways, has always felt like a community where the planning was somewhat organic, that Main Street was something that just kind of happened, that the businesses, although quaint in many ways, and businesses we will always do business with, were things that just kind of arrived, because of the families that lived here, because of the connections that they had with the community. And it has struck us, over the time that we've been here, that as delightful that has, that has been, it seems that the overall planning has been without premeditation. When we heard about this project, I have to admit that we were very excited, because what's proposed, and even though it stands in contrast to the simplicity of this city, what's proposed is truly congruent with some of the other things that you folks have already decided to do. City Hall, the fire station, the library, an exceptionally expensive high school, discussions about swimming pools. I would submit to you that this plan is not incongruent with what momentum is already at play in this community, and that is one where we recognize that the people who live here are seeking exceptional resources, exceptional services, and in every regard, this plan appears to be as much in the same spirit as the things we've already chosen to do. Now, I realize that there's sensitivities about its location. Having grown up on the west side of Madison since nineteen seventy-two, I will tell you, as my family stared across the street at Acorn Field at the top of Gammon Road, we knew that one day, progress would occur, and that that cornfield would yield its way to development, and homes, and schools, and services. And as I myself work a job on the far west side of Madison, and as I gaze east, looking to where I grew up, I realized that that momentum was an assured reality moving forward. I don't see that as being dissimilar here in Verona. We moved here because we were looking for an ideal and exceptional experience, and Legends End is an opportunity to demonstrate to everyone around us that we are in a period of premeditation and consideration for how to make Verona truly a destination. Its location for this development is outside of the city center. Whether or not we can consider it to stand in contrast to the businesses that are already here, Taco Bell, McDonald's, Little Caesar's, Dairy Queen, Brew's Brothers, Culver's, I would submit to you that we are not speaking the same apple-to-apple language. Legends End is in no way in competition with these businesses. As far as the consideration of grocery stores and other amenities that this development offers, I would submit to the group that we are not in stark contrast to what we have. Those businesses on Main Street are there to serve a purpose, next to the ice rink, next to the baseball diamonds, next to what we consider the city center. And this development is an opportunity for us to have amenities and different services for the first time in the area, that will not only meet the needs of our immediate constituents, but those on the southwest side of Madison, Hawks Landing. It's truly an opportunity to elevate our living environment like never before. So we and my family are in support of the development, realizing the sensitivities that exist regarding its planning. We would, of course, appeal to the group to be careful and thoughtful in that planning, but I did want to express our support of it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Matt Kerlick, I am a sophomore at Verona High School, and I am currently in an internship with Legends Edge for architecture. And I really feel that Legends Edge would really put a great thing for us in Verona, like how I'll be able to go and get some great food with a great meal and stuff, over McDonald's and stuff like that. And I feel like it'll be a great community for everyone, there's so many things to do there compared to inside Verona, not many options, and I just a hundred percent agree with it, and I think that it'd just be a great thing for us to have. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Ryan Ritter, and I live at ten twenty-six Cree Bay Court in Verona, Wisconsin. I am a sophomore at Verona High School, and I also play on the hockey and golf team for the school. I'm doing an internship alongside Mac with Legends Edge. This internship has given me a chance to learn more about future careers that I might go into later on in life. This internship is giving me chances to learn more about architecture This internship is giving me chances to learn more about architecture and just life lessons that I might use later on in life. I support this development because it will help me later on in life and I, and will help other members in the Verona community. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak this evening?
All right, hi, everybody. My name is Danielle Fessler, and I'm a senior at the University of Wisconsin-Madison currently. So as my colleges are coming to an end, I'm really seriously looking at opportunities to further my professional career, and this is what I see in Legends Edge. Opportunities are not just a few, but many different major breaths. From the beautiful hotel to the incredible restaurants, grocery store, and small retail shops, I see tremendous opportunity for the city of Verona and not only to preserve what is already here, but to further it. We are very, in keeping in mind what is in this city currently and not to destroy it. I come from a small town, Kohler, Wisconsin, and I don't know if you guys are familiar with Kohler, but there's the American Club there, golf course, beautiful things there. When those things were first coming to Kohler, you know, everybody was against it. They were putting things into our backyard, so I very much understand what the people of Verona, their concerns. It wasn't until the Kohler, people of Kohler took into consideration the benefits that Kohler would have to the city, that they truly began to understand why the project would be meaningful. And I don't know if any of you have been to Kohler, but it is a beautiful destination for all of Wisconsin now. So by this, by bringing Legends Edge to Verona, it would be a beautiful place for friends and family to gather tucked inside the historic elements of the land that will serve the community for many generations to come. I am a proud member of Team Legends Edge. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm a senior at Verona Area High School. I've grown up in Verona my entire life. I support the development of Legends Edge. I'm currently in two internships, one with architecture and one with culinary. I've been given the opportunity to learn many great things from these. As a high school student, I could probably speak for most students that I like hanging out with my friends, family, so and so. And I think Legends Edge will create that spot, create that place to hang out with your friends and family. And I think Verona is lacking such, such thing. Legends Edge will also bring a more healthy lifestyle when it comes to restaurants, period, if in comparison to what we have now. And overall, just a place you can escape with friends, family, a place to be, spend time. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak?
Hi, Mr. Mayor and Council. My name is Teresa Kegge. I live in the town of Verona and have since 1997 with my family, my husband and children. We also chose to move to the town of Verona for the purpose of the school districts and what the Verona community had to offer. However, over the past couple of years, we feel, I've also noticed that it has become to develop more of a fast food town and alley, which does support the needs of a lot of the sports teams, which my children are also on, but it doesn't really support the needs of the thousands of people that are new and coming into Epic and trying to keep them into the city and town of Verona. And for the residents who prefer to, like when we want to go have a nice dinner somewhere, there's not, there's not nice restaurants in Verona, but they're kind of limited. And so rather than going into the Madison area, we would prefer to stay in the Verona area. So we support and feel that Legends Edge would bring that to the community as well, as long as, also with the fact that we've also known the Kerlich family and we know how hard they've also worked. They want to support the community and keep the community strong and rather than having people go out to the other areas. So we definitely support and feel that Legends Edge would only benefit the Verona area and hope that you can help support that. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak?
Mr. Mayor, board members. My name is Paul Vetterly. I'm a former board member and new glares, village board member, and I like to address transportation. I am a bus driver. I've been going to Epic for the last 10 years, every day, from the Middleton Hotels. There's 250 guests that come in that are being trained at Epic, and they're all staying at Middleton Hotels. So I have to fight the traffic every day like everyone else to try to get into Epic. The Legends Edge project, you have a hotel that is one mile from Epic. It does not drive by any house. There is not one house on the way from Northern Lights to Hubble Drive at that stoplight. And the second point is that in two weeks, there's going to be 180 buses just working for Epic. Epic is here. Out of the 180 buses that are coming here, 30 of the busloads are coming out of Baraboo. I'm sorry, Wisconsidels, because they have all the hotels in Madison already booked. On the side of Epic employees of the 10,000, if you look at a small number, let's say just a thousand cars out of the 10,000 that with all your carpooling, the people that live in Verona, Fitchburg, and so forth, if you have 1,000 cars coming out of Madison, it's 30 miles round trip. That's 30,000 miles a day, just people coming from Madison to Epic. So transportation is something I think we need to really think about of how to, if you have many of those employees that live right here, instead of going all the way from Madison, I think that is a very important, important issue to have here. So anyway, I support the Legends Edge project. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. My name is Charles Dykman, and I live in Manona. My wife and I are retired. I worked for the state and Bonnie for the Madison School District. We own 40 acres of land at about the top of Woods Road. This has been family land and has been in the family since about the 1950s. I recognize that this is a neighborhood plan discussion, but it's incorrect to say, well, this is only a neighborhood plan. We've gone through this before. The city of Madison was working on setting up a neighborhood plan for the same area, and we learned at that time that although neighborhood plans are not set in stone, but there's a heavy weight on neighborhood plans for future development. Now, this neighborhood plan has really not been vetted. It's, it only began in April of 2017. We listened to a plan at the Plan Commission in Verona, and there was a lot of work with the neighbors. And the Plan Commission thought this was, was a very positive thing. This is, I think, what you'd have to say is unusual because the neighborhood plan and the Legends Plan are very close together. It's almost a carbon copy for the project at Woods Road and PD. Now, any development increases the tax base, but it also increases the services necessary, and this is quite a ways out from Verona proper. Municipalities have recently been receiving reduced income because of some lawsuits began in part by Walgreens. And just recently, the Wisconsin Supreme Court held that an assessment made by a municipality was ineffective, and the opinion suggests that in the future, the courts are going to play a lot bigger part in assessments than they have before and that boards of review have, have been dealing with very significantly. We recently learned that it, that our 40 acres probably won't be developed for 20 years because it needs a water tower. It's beyond the pumping range. And water towers nowadays cost $2 million, and we don't have $2 million. I'm 80 years old next year, so we're looking for what to do. We aren't any longer looking for a standard sort of development. So we've contacted the Verona School District, Madison School District, Dane County, DNR, Town of Verona, and City of Verona because we think that a joint project of the sorts of things that these entities do for their constituents might be a workable sort of thing. We can't afford to just donate the land, but we think a joint project would be a pretty good idea. Bonnie, my wife, particularly likes that sort of idea. This land overlooks the escarpment of the terminal moraine. A 100-foot hotel would destroy that sort of view that the Ice Age Trail is trying to take advantage of. The Ice Age Trail is scheduled to take maybe two or three acres in the corner of our land, and we'd certainly like to see that being something that users of the Ice Age Trail can go to to be able to see something in the neighborhood of open land. A neighborhood plan is for neighbors. It considers their views and interests. Verona has adequate land for development and for redevelopment, as we saw at the Plan Commission last week. Businesses really need to be downtown and not have the whole, the whole business community spread over a large area. This should not be a West Verona, sort of like a balloon at the end of a string. My suggestion is for the council to ask the Plan Commission to consider changes to the neighborhood plan and report its findings back to the common council. Now, Mayor Hockhammer mentioned at the Plan Commission meeting that the Plan Commission really had only three things that it could do. It could approve the neighborhood plan, not approve the neighborhood plan, or take no position. I think that the Plan Commission, from the question that I heard and from what they had been doing in other projects, is a unique organization. It's got people on it that know what they're doing, at least from, from what we've seen. So I think that if this council were to refer to the Plan Commission and ask for, if they can't make recommendations, at least their comments, their observations, and what they feel about a project that really, in my view, does not fit in this neighborhood.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak under public comment? Anyone else wishing to speak? It's your third and final opportunity. Seeing no one else, we will move on with the agenda. Next, we have approval of minutes from the August 28th Common Council meeting. Those minutes were included with your packet. What's your pleasure? We have a motion by Mr. McGilvery. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Reiki. Were there any additions or corrections to the minutes of the previous meeting? Seeing none, all those in favor of approval of minutes signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. And that motion carries. Under mayor's business, just a couple of things. First of all, I really want to say on behalf of the council, our appreciation to the people that spoke tonight and the respect that you've had for each other. We don't always see that, so we really respect that. We don't always have to agree, but we, we should always respect each other. I also wanted to mention, I know that if any, you know, probably everybody, they should be watching the news and seeing what's going on in other parts of the country, and hopefully we can all agree that our thoughts and prayers should be with those people that are struggling right now. And then finally, when I came yesterday to pick up my mail, I also had the opportunity, there were a number of our police staff that were out in the parking lot, and I also got to meet our new canine, Dreah, who turns two years old today. So if you get a chance to go see Dreah, welcome her to our community, and this is just a really good thing. I'm really excited that we have a canine, our own canine, in, in the city of Verona. So with that, we're going to move along on the agenda. We will have the administrators' report next. Mr. Makorsky?
Thank you. Just have a couple items. Wanted to remind council that our final finance committee working on, on the budget will be September 13th, starting at 5:00. We have a, a public project going on September 14th for Development Group and JSD Professional Services is, we'll be holding a workshop talking about neighborhood designs. That's in this room on September 14th, again at 7:00. And Dane County City Villages, Cities and Villages Administration will be having a membership meeting coming up September 20th from 5:00 to 7:00. It's at Wanakee Village Center. So wanted council to know that information.
Thank you, Mr. Makorsky. Are there any questions for the administrator? Seeing none, we will move on to the engineers' report. Mr. Monpass, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You have my full report for you, but a couple of highlights. The 2017 Street Rehab, the curb and gutter is complete, sidewalk is being poured, and the, hopefully, weather-dependent pavement will be going down later this week. And the Lincoln Street Channel, which is right outside the city offices here, is 50 or 60% complete. You can see a lot of work going on out there right now.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Monpass? Seeing none, thank you, Jeff. We will move on then to committee reports. We will begin with the Finance Committee. Mr. McGilvery, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Under item 981, I'll make a motion to approve payment of the monthly bills in the amount
We have a motion by Mr. McGilvery. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Linder. Mr. McGilvery, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. In the way of explanation, three of the larger items from this month's bills, the first being to Dane County Clerk of Court for right-of-way acquisition for the County Highway M Project, Parcel 16. That amount is $357,617.63. Next one being to Epic Systems for Tiff 7, Tiff Note Parking Garage 1. That was a prepayment on that amount, a bond we had, saved approximately $623,000 in, in interest payments. That amount of payment is $4,205,925. And finally, to Priest Construction for Downtown Streetscape Construction. That amount, $201,486.86.
Thank you, Mr. McGilvery. Questions or comments on the major expenditures or the bills in general? Seeing none, all those in favor of the approval of bills signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, no. And that motion carried, and the bills are approved. Anything else from the Finance Committee?
No, sir.
Thank you, Mr. McGilvery. We will move on then to Planning Commission items. Mr. Sayer, Agenda Item 9B1, please.
Thank you. The first item is Discussion Regarding the Northwest Neighborhood Plan. The proposed Northwest Neighborhood Plan is generally bounded by County Highway P D to the south, University Ridge Golf Course to the east, the Goodman Jewish Community Center to the west, and the Town of Verona to the north. This plan will guide the future growth and development of lands located northwest of the city. Jason Valerius from M S A Professional Services is available tonight to provide an overview to the Common Council at tonight's meeting. The Plan Commission held a public hearing on the draft plan on September 5th, 2017. Comments and concerns raised during the public hearing included the following: that the project is not consistent with the rural character of the area, the project is in direct conflict, competition to the downtown redevelopment, concerns about, excuse me, concerns about existing and future traffic, including traffic on existing town roads, concerns about the Legends Edge development, concerns the plan promotes sprawl, concerns the plan does not maintain the small-town feel as identified in the comprehensive plan, a lack of green space in the plan, and a general desire to accommodate the Ice Age Trail with more green space. Written comments received prior to and at the Plan Commission have been included in the council packet. The Plan Commission discussed this item at the September meeting. Comments from the Plan Commission included concerns about densities and heights identified in the plan. The Plan Commission deferred action on the plan and requests the plan be forwarded to the Common Council for feedback. Tonight, the council is encouraged to provide feedback on the plan.
Thank you, Mr. Sayer. Before we take any questions or comments, could you just briefly talk about the timeline and the process of how we got to where we are today? Please.
Sure. I guess, would you like Jason Valerius to provide his overview that he provided the Plan Commission?
Sure. Jason?
All right. I realize it was a limited question that doesn't really require a lot behind it, but our first slide here is about the planning process. Again, I'm Jason Valerius with M S A Professional Services. We started this process with interviews with a number of the property owners in the planning area back in April, as I think was mentioned earlier tonight. And we met with Plan Commission to present some initial thoughts and ideas in May, and then a full-fledged, a full draft of the plan in June. There was a public meeting, an open, open invite, public meeting with presentation, and then some open-house style time on June 29th. And then we came back to Plan Commission on September 5th last week with a, for a public hearing. So I've made similar presentations at most of those meetings, and that's how we got to today.
Great. Thank you so much, Jason. So we will open it up for questions and comments. Mr. Diaz, please.
Thank you. I have a bunch of questions, but to start out with, could you, could you talk about the endangered species? That was something I was wondering about as well, and it came up during public comment.
Yeah, so there's, I think we identified per state data that there are likely a couple of endangered species in the area. The state, and this may sound odd, I know it does to some people, the state doesn't really advertise what those are, where they are, because they're concerned about not wanting to draw attention to them, and that's kind of counterintuitive. But what I can, what I can tell you is that I would expect anything that we would need to be worried about, it would be in the, in the woodlands, within the planning area. So that's the area that we pay attention to. And when, if and when developments, specific developments are proposed, an evaluation of those lands would be necessary.
Go ahead, Mr. Diaz.
Thank you. A lot of people talked about the Ice Age Trail, and I'm a big supporter of it. Could you clarify the impact this project will have? Because, I mean, I don't, I don't think anyone thinks it's going to, like, literally cut off the Ice Age Trail, but is it going to be kind of blocking potential corridor land?
I can, I can take that. I mean, clearly this, and if we could actually go to a map, I can show you that we have identified skirting along the north edge of the neighborhood plan area through the yellow, a potential route for the trail. So the, the trail exists right now through the golf course and comes out kind of at the top of the hill on Woods Road. And so the intent is that it will eventually meet up through these lands and on into the town, going out the north side of the planning area. So the exact route and the amount of land that would be reserved relative to any development that might be proposed is something to be worked out during any development process or during, you know, acquisition of land specifically for the purpose of, of trail reservation or construction pre-development. We haven't specified a dimension of land to be reserved, but we have shown the trail. So the intent of this plan is, one way or another, the trail will be there.
Thank you. To offer a comment on that, I guess, my thing is I'd like to designate the green space now. I mean, because my goal is, is to make sure the Ice Age Trail, I guess, lives up to its full potential. I think it's a big keystone for the area, and, and, like I said, I'm a big fan, and I think, I mean, we have other green space on there, so I'd like to just basically take it off, take it off the plate and say, this isn't going to get developed. And then I guess my final question then is, is just in general, with, with the, the boundary agreement between the Town of Verona and the City of Verona, is, where is this? Is this like in our A area or B area?
The entire planning area is in the B area.
So that leaves me with another question. Why are we in Area B, when my understanding is we'd go to Area A first?
Mr. Sayer, please.
The boundary agreement did not specify the sequencing of how that would happen. You know, the Area A was identified as a, we anticipate a future type, more near-future type growth area. B was identified as a joint town-city interest area. Part of that was, the reason for that was just some of those lands in some B areas, maybe not this area, but other areas are kind of up, in the, up in the air in question of how and when, and can we actually serve them for development? So that was more the, it's going to happen, and just the timing of the B area was, was unknown in adoption of the agreement.
Thank you. That's all for now.
Thank you. Questions or comments? Additional questions? Mr. Steiner, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Adam, the big concern coming from the people I've talked with is the development of the roads. We did not find any planning on how they're going to handle Highway P D or even a four-lane road instead of a two-lane road. I know McKee Road is being worked on towards Madison, but this huge development probably should even have a second or a third exit point or entrance point into this development. And is there any possible way that they can have more than just one entrance or one exit other than onto P D?
Sure. Any, any development kind of at that large of a scale, if it's the Legends Edge project or something else, would take a traffic impact analysis, a T I A. Those haven't been completed yet, mostly just because we need to get through the neighborhood planning process first, along with some other items after this. We did look at, at part of the, kind of the planning of this area, we did look at a road connection between Shady Oak and Woods Road that would have gone over the, the bridge line that's there. And to be quite honest with you, I don't think it's economically feasible, or even from an engineering standpoint, it'd be very difficult to get that east-west connection. Access points to P D in general, you know, between Woods and Shady Oak from a city perspective, I think they're limited, just from how we look at it of trying to control access onto P D and onto a four-lane highway. You know, so we've, how we've set up our transportation plans are, is to, to limit that access. But as projects come forward, those traffic impact analysis will be completed.
Go ahead, Mr. Steiner.
A follow-up. Most of the folks in northern part of District 3 that I represent are really against this project because they don't see how all those people are going to, first off, get in there, and once they're living there, how are they going to get out of there to contribute to their way of life? For example, going to work? How are we going to get the people who are using that area for recreation in and out of there while all these other people are coming and going or trying to go to work? We need to do more work with the Dane County before we do anything on this development, in my opinion, because this is just another slog that will just eat up our police officers as they try to deal with this type of a development without planning with the roads. More roads, more than one way in and out, and I don't know where it's going to be. I looked at a topography map. I didn't see a possibility anywhere. Maybe even a road to Riley, huh? Thanks.
Thank you. Other questions or comments? Feedback for the Plan Commission. Mr. Linder, please.
Thank you. So Mr. Sayer, what, are we just looking for feedback tonight? Is that, I guess that's the, I didn't hear that confirmed. Is that what you're looking for?
Yes, yes, please. I think the Plan Commission is looking for feedback. I know, as staff, speaking as behalf of staff here, we would appreciate any feedback, and any feedback that you can provide that is specific. So if there is a specific concern that you have, that would be very beneficial to us. The more detail you can provide us, the better. But I know the Plan Commission's looking to hear what the council has to say, but as staff especially, if, if there are changes, the council would like to have us take a look at. That's, that's what we're looking for. Or if you want to endorse the plan, or you like what's in here, tell us what you like as well. That's, that's what we're here, want to hear tonight.
Okay. And then the, so the future land use map, the, you know, there's a lot of yellow for residential housing and some lower-density apartments, but is, what is the projected density of the mixed-use area, commercial mixed-use area? I didn't see that in that pack in.
For the mixed-use area, I don't, I think that we had set a maximum, I'm just trying to track it down. One of the challenges, of course, is that the fact that it is mixed-use can render, you know, units per acre not very meaningful. But, thank you. So 15 units per acre and 65 feet of height is what the limit would be unless by the city's approval, based on agreement that the design quality has been enhanced, the plan would allow the city to approve up to 50 units per acre and up to 100 feet in height. So if you're looking at the planning document, that is the top left of page 15.
So if, whenever this gets, if this gets approved or not, if, let's say it does get approved at some point, they would be limited to 15 units per acre unless we said they could go up to 50?
Correct.
But there's nothing stopping them from asking for 70, 100, whatever it is.
Well, you, this, the plan is-
If it comes at a P U D O process, they can, they can ask wherever they like.
So I, I'll take a shot, and Adam can fill in. The, the neighborhood plan is proposed to be an amendment to your comprehensive plan. Your comprehensive plan doesn't address this area right now, and so you would be amending your comprehensive plan to address this area with this content. And if you, if you adopted it as it's written right now, your comprehensive plan would say that you could approve up to 50 units per acre and 100 feet in height. And so if you got a proposal for more than that and were interested in approving that, you would first need to amend the comprehensive plan to be consistent with state statute before you would approve more than that.
Okay. Go ahead, Mr. Linder.
So basically, you're asking about if we want to put residential here, mixed-use here, slash commercial, and then lower-density apartment, so to speak, in this location? Is that correct? Is that the gist of it? We're not talking about Legends, we're not talking about Legends Edge tonight. I know there's a lot of comments Legends, Legends, but that project is not actually on the board, on, on the agenda tonight. They're just talking about the land that's potentially used for Legends Edge.
Correct. The intent of this process, if I could, if I could offer an explanation that sort of puts it into context, I think the intent of this process was to, it, it was kicked off by the Legends Edge proposal, and that proposal was in a concept, of a conceptual nature, not, I believe, as an official submittal, please approve this or deny this now. But it was recognized that the city really wasn't in a place to be able to approve it absent thinking about the wider area and the relationship between that and the wider area. So we went into this process looking at the entirety of this portion of the future city to understand how all the pieces could fit together. The way the neighborhood is planned, plan is written right now, the Legends, Legends Edge project is approvable if you have this in place first, recognizing that you also need to exercise, that council would need to agree that it's satisfied with, you know, the, the quality of design and quality of development before, and so it, before it would approve above 15 units per acre.
The reason I'm asking those questions is, I do, I would like, I, I think this is actually is a good spot for commercial mixed-use along P D. I'm not sold on specifically on Legends Edge project, but to have some sort of development along here, I think is a good, is a good fit. It is a little bit farther out from the city, so that's one of my hesitations. As far as, you know, the density for, if it's above 50 units an acre is getting really high, 100 unit, or 100 feet high is really high. It's not, nothing we've got, even came close to before. I know there are some properties in, just to the north of there and near Hawks Landing that are pretty large, and it's, you know, only a mile or two away, but for Verona, that would be a new, a new venture for us. But as far as the land use, using that stuff, you, you know, what is presented, I don't have a big problem with that as it is, but I would have issues with the density if it, 15 units acre, no problem. 50, not sure. 100 units an acre or more, it'd be really tough. That's one of the big things. And I think Mr. Steiner brought up a lot of good transportation questions. There's going to be a lot of people on that road. Seems to be more and more all the time that you're adding a lot of people there. That'll definitely something to be figured out. The last thing I'd like to say is, I'd like to say thanks to everybody coming out at 8:30 on a Monday night, so thank you for coming on and coming to talk to us tonight, last week, for the Plan Commission. I know that one got started late. So thank you for coming out tonight.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Linder. Just a, a couple of follow-ups to what Mr. Linder stated. So the, a neighborhood plan would have to be approved, an annexation would have to occur, and urban service area approval would all have to be approved before this project or any project in this area could go forward. So I'm not sure if everybody understands that. The neighborhood plan would have to be approved, urban service area would have to go through the Regional Planning Commission, and annexation would have to be applied for and, and considered. Other questions or comments? Ms. Doyle, please.
Thank you. I'd also like to say thank you to so many folks for reaching out and not only coming to tonight's meeting, but emailing and calling. It's always nice to get a better sense of feedback from the community, and just more ideas coming to the table are always a good thing. I would echo some of the earlier comments related to looking at maybe preserving more open space, especially in relation to the Ice Age Trail. I think it's very important that we do that on the front end of the process as opposed to trying to do that belatedly once developments are already trying to move forward and using this plan as a template. I feel like it's better to err on the side of caution and, again, set aside more land for that purpose. One thing I did like about the proposed materials was that the need for possible expansion of bus service was identified. I know the current routes primarily service Epic, so to see an expansion of that would help relieve some of the issues that came up during public comment related to transportation, easing environmental impact. to transportation, easing environmental impacts and traffic congestion, which would both be positive things to come out of this plan. Let's see. Also was wondering, as was alluded to during public comment, why this particular parcel was cited for commercial or mixed-use development? Not sure if it was related to provision of urban services or how that kind of came out through the process.
Jason, please.
Sure. The traffic patterns out there in terms of where the traffic is going right now for Epic, back and forth between Epic and Madison, basically, and the topography to some extent, but primarily the traffic patterns and, you know, the number of people going by these sites is really what drives it to that corner of the planning area. We, I would note that we made an effort to show and plan for a transition in feel as you go west along PD from the east end of the site, near that intersection with Northern Lights, to the west. And in particular, when you go through that, past the central drainage way through the middle of the planning area, the plan accounts, includes a required setback and greenway along the highway there to push development further back to make a transition from a more urban to a more rural feel at that point.
Thank you. Just a couple more comments. Thank you. Another portion was, I know the report talked about affordable housing and how that is probably going to be more kind of determined by market demands, especially in these type of developments. It seems like it's more on the higher end of things. Of course, it would be great to see more work done to make projects more affordable, but again, higher density seems to be one of the few mechanisms, especially in, in areas of this type, to do so, which, again, is kind of a trade-off moving forward. But if we could maybe explore different ways to try and make this a more accessible property to folks of different incomes, it would be great to see that included if possible. And then just kind of addressing a couple of the, the ideas that came up about planning in general for Verona, how we've kind of followed a more organic planning process. And I could see where that would appear to be the case in some areas of the city, which is why I think getting these plans done very thoughtfully on the front end is so important and why we, as a city, are looking to hire an economic development coordinator. And just look forward to kind of diversifying some of our more traditional development that's been going on in the core of the city through this. And I think, again, if we do it thoughtfully and in both a financially and environmentally sustainable way, we can hopefully achieve that through this process. And couldn't help but make a little food plug for some of the newer restaurants here in Verona, since that seems to be a pervasive theme in many of these public hearings. But I know Liberty Business Park was actually just featured in Madison Magazine for Verona Woods and some other options. So just glad to see so much interest in the development here in, in Verona.
Thank you. Other comments, feedback for the Plan Commissioner for staff? Ms. Gasko, please.
Yes, I would just like to second Alder Doyle's request to see a little bit more attention paid to housing affordability. It's, it's one paragraph in this plan and across all of our plans, I'd really like to see that given more attention because market-rate apartments are affordable for a certain segment of the population, but that's how we seem to set our definition of what's affordable. And I don't know that that's accurate.
Thank you. Any additional questions or comments? Ms. Ricky, please.
I guess I'm just echoing what other people have said, but I, I really think that it's important that this type of development definitely be on municipal water and sewer, so I was glad to see that, and that some more workforce housing be available, and that I like the Alder Diaz's idea of preemptively including preservation of green spaces, especially around the Ice Age Trail.
Thank you. Other feedback? Mr. McGilvery, please.
Thank you. In listening to comments tonight, it seemed to be the focus was on the land, or the Legends End. And if we're gonna, it seems like, to the point of the people who were opposed, that the Legends End is the end result of this plan. I sure would like to see a little more information on what that really is. I, I can hear the people who are supporting it, but I, I don't know what it is. If it's a hundred-foot-tall buildings, I'm absolutely opposed. I would agree with the people who are in the town. I'm, I'm in the city right now, but I'll be in the town. And I can see why you'd be opposed to a hundred-foot-tall buildings. Without knowing what it is that you're actually proposing on the Legends End side, it's pretty hard for me to make a educated decision about an overall plan. So moving forward, even though I know that's not what we're talking about doing, but it sure seems like it to anybody, I'm sure, who's listening tonight. Yes, this is about the neighborhood plan, but it's, as near as I can tell, it was all about Legends End. So is there any opportunity for us to get more information about that and how it works within this neighborhood plan? And the other thing I would say is, you know, there's, is everybody who is included, every landowner who's included in this plan, they were involved in the conversations?
Mr. Sayer, please.
So, so we did meet with, individually with, I forget how many landowners. It was mostly the principal larger landowners in this area. That's typically how we do these planning processes. We sit down with the larger landowners. We did notify all people within the planning area for the, the open house, which was held in June?
June.
June. And then as part of the public hearing process, we sent public hearing notices to everyone who was, once again, in the, in the planning area itself.
So what percentage do you think of the people who have land in this neighborhood were contacted or?
Depends on your classified percentage. I mean, so if you look at the acreage of land itself, we met with the Dykman's, the Cowling's, the Pan-Capital property, the Kerlik property, the Mowers, the Marty property. And we also had a meeting with, with Epic as well.
So this really is for Theron, but Theron's way in the back, and you probably can answer this. What percentage of this land currently could be serviced by city services?
Mr. Sayer.
And I do know, and I do know that we have stubbed water across the way, and I know that it's been part of public works. But looking at the property and the topography, I'm sure you guys, when you were laying out this neighborhood plan, you were, you were considering those things and the expense that it would take to get infrastructure to these other pieces.
Sure. So I can, I can start by answering that. And if Theron wants to jump in, he can come up, but I think I can probably cover the basics of it. So in general, this proper, this area is divided into, do you want to take it? Okay. Into two, into two pressure zones. The, the central pressure zone is located across the street from Northern Lights at that T-intersection there. As you go east on County Highway PD towards Woods Road, that is in an area that cannot be served currently by the central pressure zone. As lands on Woods Road are developed, that would take a booster of some type to boost the pressure to those areas. Ultimately, if you keep going north up Woods Road, long-term, that would be, potentially take a water tower, as Mr. Dykman had alluded to tonight. Going west, there are, on the screen before you, those red lines. Those red lines are higher elevations of lands that, as you get west of those red lines going west, there's a lands that we're not exactly sure if we'll be able to serve those or not with municipal services, just because of pressure constraints that we have. As development occurs in that, in that direction, we'll need some type of water study either completed by the city or by developers to take a closer look at that. But between those, the red line in the west and the red line on the east, that is in the, in the central zone that we have existing. It looks like your screen's not working. Okay.
It seems, it seems like there's a significant amount, a portion of this, that currently would not easily be fed by city services. So begs the question, from my point of view, why we are talking about including this in a neighborhood plan and why we're not focusing more on the area that is specific to what we could actually serve right now or in the relative short term?
Mr. Sayer, please.
We could serve property across from Northern Lights relatively quickly. You know, water, as you alluded to, is stubbed there, sanitary, I believe.
Which, in all fairness to the people who are out listening, is Legends End.
Correct.
So that's my point. Why are we not talking about that particular piece and what the real expectation for that particular landowner is for that piece of property and the implications to it in general? Because I think Jack alluded to it a little bit. I think under the current plan, or the plan that you're showing right here, the densities are pretty low, but they could be significantly higher, which I'm, again, I'm on record as not being somebody who supports high-density development, especially there. I just, I have a real problem with it for a lot of the reasons that have already been mentioned here tonight.
Mr. Jacobson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The water utility currently has a central pressure zone on the north side of County Highway PD at the intersection of Northern Lights and PD. We can serve any lands within that area below an elevation of 1,040, I believe is the rough number. The water master plan that was done in 2015 identifies that, and I'd have to go back and actually look at the, the actual report to see what the number is, but it is within that range. A tower would be needed up by Woods Road at some point when the demand is there, and additional storage is needed within this area. How that tower is going to get filled is by a booster station that would be positioned roughly at the southeast corner of Northern Lights and County Trump PD. So that's the water side of things. What the ultimate demands are up there is all going to be based on land use. And if the central zone and the wells that we have in place concurrently supply those needs and the fire flow will be updated as needed in the future. So if, if our system becomes inadequate, then additional sources are going to be needed. Regarding the sanitary sewer, the one advantage this area has is the Madison Metropolitan Sewer District has a lower Badger Mill Creek as the main discharge point for all the sewer in this area. That is not storm sewer, that is strictly just wastewater. So they have a project that is currently bringing that interceptor to the north side of PD roughly by the spring of 2018. The extension of that sewer will be based on the need for it. So that's where, so all sewer will basically flow almost to basically where the channel ravine is now known as the Dry Tributary, which is along the floodplain line, shown in the maps in the planning study. That covers the sewer utility. Storm sewer will all need to be designed adequately to meet all ordinances and every other governing code, whether it's state, county, or city. And traffic will be assessed as development occurs with traffic, traffic impact analyses, such as what Adam referred to as before. So in the, the intersection of Northern Lights and PD has been set up. When and if needed, a connection point to the north could be added to it. We designed it to have capacity for the signal operations there as needed in the future. So hopefully that kind of gives you a quick executive summary of the public works and utility side of the development up there and the broad spectrum of the plan. I can take any other questions if needed.
Any other questions right now for Mr. Jacobson? Not seeing any? Thank you. Any additional feedback? Mr. Diaz, please.
Thank you. I just wanted to say, yeah, to echo Alder Doyle's comments, there's a lot of great restaurants in Verona, there's more openings. So I think, I think that we are balancing out there. I think in regards to Legends End, like, yeah, technically, this isn't approving the Legends End thing, but like, if the plan passes how it is, this is, in, in, in all but name, this is approving the Legends End development. So I think it makes a lot of sense to talk about it, because once this is approved, Legends End is probably going to happen. And as far as, and I forgot to mention this previously, that my overall thoughts on the plan, I'm skeptical. I think at some point, the city's going to be there, regardless of what it is, whether it's Legends End, how, you know, single-family homes, whatever it is, I, I'm just skeptical that the city's ready to be out there right now. I want to see a, a, a lot of incremental development to the city, a way to keep, the city to keep its hometown feel. I think some infill development in his order, in order as well. And to me, this just seems like we're, we're running out on behalf of one landowner, you know, and, and, and even just, just the fact that we're running this plan that, that seems centered on this one development, as was raised during public comment, I have some questions about fairness. If certain people get to pick what kind of zoning development they get, and, you know, gosh, I'm not a developer, but I know some of those zoning designations are worth more money than others, I, I, I kind of, I kind of question the whole process. So, so right now, my thing is that I think, you know, we'll be there, but maybe it'll be five years, maybe it'll be ten years, and, you know, gosh, by my, my pessimistic watch, we're due for another housing crash, so it might be more than ten years. And so to me, I'm just not ready to commit the current city resources to, to, to this big, risky project. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Diaz. Any additional questions or comments? Mr. McGilvery?
Mr. Sayer, as it relates to A and B in the city, or the town, where are we at with the A portion, given that we're already talking about the B portion now?
Sure. So the, excuse me, the, the A, the A portion that is on the screen before you, the A part that's close to M in PD, the utility work for that project is starting now. That project will be wrapped up at some point at the end of 2019. So my understanding is, I believe in twenty, spring of 2019, that project, or the area would be able to have services extended into developments that's occurring there. For that area, we also have that neighborhood design charrette that is occurring this coming Thursday with forward development for their potential development of those lands. Other areas in that A include lands that I believe are north of Liberty Business Park, north side of Whalen Road. Development of that will be, you know, contingent upon, one, creating a neighborhood plan for that area, and then, second, development happening actually in Liberty Business Park. I believe other A areas are also in the southwestern part of the city, which is Highway 69 southwest of the Coating Place of 18151. That area's been on the, the docket here for some time. Some of those lands are in the urban service area, so that, those lands are, are ready for development. The, the one big challenge there is just the, the cost of running utilities is, is quite expensive. So it's definitely slowed development because of the, the cost constraints on that. But the next, you know, area that's happening here is that north neighborhood, which we've been talking about now for some time.
Thank you. Ms. Doyle, please.
Thank you. I'd just like to add that, again, if we want to ensure that we're developing the city in a thoughtful and meaningful manner, I believe it's necessary to go through this process in creating neighborhood plans. And although there has been some talk of a specific development with this, obviously, that's going to be a lot further down in the process, any specific approvals for specified developments. I know that there's, again, they seem intertwined at this point, but I don't think that we can move forward in the planning process in a thoughtful way if we don't take the steps to make sure that we, we have zoning in place and ideas of what development in different areas should look like. And, again, it's not in relation to any specified development, it's just so that we know what could potentially happen in these areas, because without that, we can't get the subsequent approvals and move forward. So those are just my thoughts on it. Thank you.
Thank you. Other questions, comments, or feedback? All right. I would just recommend this, that if there is anything that comes up after this evening, please funnel those through Mr. Sayer. Please do not CC all members of the council. If you're sending emails, we want to make sure we're not violating the open meetings law. So if there is anything, please funnel those through Mr. Sayer, please. Thank you. Next, we will move on to Agenda Item 9B2, discussion and possible action. Mr. Sayer, if you want to provide the background on this agenda item, please. Mr. Sayer, if you want to provide the background on this agenda item, please?
Thank you. This is Resolution R-17-043, approving a precise implementation plan located at 720 to 730 Schubert Street, and specifically located on lots 33 through 36 of the Hometown Grove subdivision that would allow for the construction of a four-unit townhouse. The proposed precise implementation plan, PIP, would allow for the construction of a four-unit townhouse in the Hometown Grove subdivision. The proposed townhouse will be the last townhouse building to be constructed in this development. The Plan Commission held the required public hearing on September 5th of 2017 and voted four to zero to recommend for the approval of the PIP with the following conditions. That, one, prior to the issuance of building permits, the applicant shall submit a revised landscaping plan that provides full screening of the adjacent single-family lot to the south. And, two, the applicant shall obtain an erosion control permit prior to starting construction.
Thank you, Mr. Sayer. Questions, comments, potential motions? Mr. McGilvery, please.
For the sake of conversation, I will make a motion to approve Resolution R-17-043, approving a precise implementation, implementation plan located at 720, 730 Schubert Street.
We have a motion by Mr. McGilvery. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Diaz. Mr. McGilvery, you made the motion. Do you want to speak to the motion?
I'm sorry, I shouldn't have made a contingent upon the, the approvals or the conditions that were noted by-
And the second agrees.
I, I do, I just think it's interesting that we're back to the four units. That would be my only comment. I think we've been back and forth with the four units and this location and condominiums. And like most things, it's cyclical. At one point, previous council was told there would never be four units or condos there. It wasn't going to happen because the economy wouldn't support it. And then at that time, I think the council said, well, that's okay, but we're not going to approve what you're asking to do. And here we are again, talking about four units. So I'm supporting.
Thank you. Mr. Diaz, did you want to add anything?
I think it's a good idea, and I think we should, we should pass it.
Okay, thank you. Other questions or comments on the motion? Questions or comments on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor of the approval of Resolution Number R-17-043 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. And that motion carries. We are now on Agenda Item 9B3. Mr. Sayer, please.
Thank you. This is Resolution R-17-044, approving a precise implementation plan located at 501 West Verona Avenue, 503 West Verona Avenue, 507 West Verona Avenue, 513 West Verona Avenue, 100 Legion Street, and 501 through 522 Top Avenue that would allow for the construction of a 204, of 243 apartment units and 23,495 square feet of commercial space. The proposed precise implementation plan, EIP, would allow for the construction of two mixed-use buildings and one multifamily building. Overall, the entire development will provide 23,495 square feet of commercial space along Verona Avenue and 243 apartment units. The Plan Commission held the required public hearing on September 5th of 2017 and voted four to zero to recommend for the approval of the PIP with the following conditions. One, the PIP shall become effective, the PIP shall become effective upon Forward Development Group acquiring the properties identified within the application boundaries. Two, Forward Development Group shall enter into a developers agreement with the city of Verona. Three, prior to the issuance of building permits, the applicant shall submit a revised landscaping plan that conforms to the city's landscaping point requirements. Four, the applicant shall submit a bike parking plan for city staff approval. Five, the applicant shall submit a CSM certified survey map for approval, combining the parcels and dedicating right away once Forward Development Group acquires the properties. Six, the applicant shall request vacation of Top Avenue per the requirements of Wisconsin State statutes. And seven, the applicant shall complete a traffic impact analysis, TIA, for approval by city staff.
Thank you, Mr. S, thank you, Mr. Sayer. Questions, comments? Mr. McGilvery, please.
Again, for the sake of opening up discussion, I'll make a motion to approve Resolution Number R-17-044, approving a precise implementation plan located at 501 West Verona Avenue, 503 West Verona Avenue, 507 West Verona Avenue, 513 West Verona Avenue, 100 Legion Street, 501 through 522 Top Avenue that would allow for the construction of 243 apartment units and 23,495 square feet of commercial space.
We have a motion by Mr. McGilvery. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Doyle.
Does that condition still in the packet?
That all seven of them.
Okay. Again, Mr. McGilvery, you made the motion.
I think Mr. Winnicky did a great job of kind of highlighting where the city has been in, in previous, at previous times with all those parcels. And what a great opportunity this, this particular project is, as you all know. And as I just said, I'm not a big fan of high-density development. But when you're going to do it, I think this is, this is the right, right way to doing it. And I think it's the right time to do it for that particular, or those particular pieces. It creates a great opportunity to fix a problem we know we have. And I'm glad to see that they've stuck with it, and they were back before us tonight.
Thank you. Ms. Doyle?
Thank you. I definitely still appreciate the need for redevelopment in this area, but continue to have concerns regarding the existing multifamily units. I've gotten feedback from some of my constituents, who, this is in District 1 here, who have said that they have had issues with rental agents, just as far as transparency regarding this process. When they've asked for information regarding this specific development, they've been told that they have no idea what they're talking about. When there were notices literally posted in this area saying that there was a public hearing, it was after the public hearings had even occurred. So would just appreciate maybe if someone can speak about what that process looks like and definitely understand the need, especially until development moves forward to continue to rent these properties and get an income from them. But just would appreciate more information regarding that, as well as maybe just for the benefit of folks who might be watching at home, just more specific information regarding the vacation of Top Avenue.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Good evening. Ron Hinch with Forward Development Group. And I'll, I can speak specifically to that need. Now, as it relates to the public hearing notices, we, we are not the owners of the property at this time. We did, as there is a public hearing each time, notify the owners and requested and made sure that they committed to us that they would communicate it to their tenants. And what happened after that, we don't totally control. So I did not, I cannot speak specifically as to the delivery timeframe of those, okay? What I can speak to, though, is what our, our plans are as it relates to the property and, and the timing of that. And we have communicated this to the current owners of the property as well. And I'll give you just a little bit of background information, might help you. There's actually 24 units there. At this point in time, 23 of those units are rented. And depending on the owner, and everybody does it different, some of the leases are month-to-month, and they've been month-to-month for a number of years. That hasn't changed because of our involvement. Others are a combination of, of short-term leases and even annual leases. To date, and what we've told the owners is, there is no plan that when we would purchase the property and start the process of the environmental remediation portion, to change anything as it relates to those units on Top Avenue. And we've even given authority to the owners to extend annual leases on there. There's leases right now that extend out through October of 2018 in certain, in, in, in at least one case, and they're annually renewing them. Our plan would be that when we take that over, that we would re-engage those who currently own those properties to continue to manage them until such point in time as that section of the project is needed. We would start on the front part of the project with the environmental remediation and of course, chase that and try to make sure that all of that is handled properly, as is required. And as we then proceed through the project, we would ultimately then move toward those apartment units. And, and at that point in time, those residents would, would have to find housing as we redevelop that portion. That could be anywhere from, you know, nine to 12 months or more, depending on timeframe for dealing with that front part of the property. As we were asked to come back with a, you know, how would we deal with those residents at that point in time? And we will engage early with them and do a number of things. First of all, as we get an understanding of the tenants and what their needs are, we will sign, it's either going to be an FDG or a third party. We haven't made that decision at this point in time. But a relocation specialist who would work with them to find and meet their needs, what, wherever that may be. And we then also would work to help them with their moving timeframes and reimbursement of their moving costs. So that, that's a discussion that's coming down the road a ways. It won't happen directly at December 31st of 2017, or it's mainly in the first quarter, if everything is approved, that we would start to be able to purchase the property and start the environmental remediation. Okay?
Thank you. And do appreciate that it sounds like you've definitely been putting some thought into the, at least beginnings of these processes. And just, just wanted to convey, again, what I had been hearing from residents and constituents, just because, you know, at best, when you can literally see signs that say that there was a public hearing and have known that there was a public hearing that happened for rental agents, to say they have no idea that this is even being discussed is disingenuous at best. So thank you for your time and efforts.
You're welcome.
Other, Mr. Diaz, please.
Thank you. While, while I have a ton of respect for Joe Winnicky, and I, I really want to see the gas station developed. I mean, for me, this comes down to, you know, we're going to use public TIF, public incentive, to tear down working-class housing, to put up luxury housing. That's, that's, to me, just a red line for me, and I, I'm opposed to this project. I remain opposed to this project. If it, if it was the other areas, I, you know, I would be 100% in favor, leading the parade. But as it stands right now, I can't support any portion of this project. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Lynder, please.
Thank you, Mayor. I drive through this area quite a bit, since my district's on the, the west side. And there's always been a thought where that gas station has been, always been need of, basically needing redevelopment. This is a good opportunity to do that. There's, I know there's some drawbacks, you know? Putting TIF towards residential is not my, it's not something I really favor. The density is more than I would like, but I'm giving and take, I think overall, the idea of this project is really going to enhance the west side of Verona. Ones, like I said, I go through a lot, not everybody drives through it as much as probably the people on the west side, District 1 and 2. This is going to be, I think it's going to be a nice project. It's going to provide a lot more housing for people. Right now, this current property provides 24 units. This is now probably 243 units, so it's, you know, 10 times more. I think it's going to be nice. I look forward to see the completion, and I will support it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lynder. Other questions, comments? Mr. McGilvery, please.
I wonder if either yourself or Mr. McCorsky or Adam can speak to the TIF component of this, put a value on it for someone who might be listening? And when I say value, what the city's investment in this is. And I could, the reason I'm asking that question, and I understand what Mr. Diaz is saying, but you also have to remember, there's a pretty significant remediation that needs to take place if this property is going to develop. You're going to invest TIF probably if you want to ever see this property develop in any fashion, simply because the remediation that has to take place moving forward. And it's not, the remediation is not limited just to that parcel. It's, it's a bigger picture that we got to look at when we're having this conversation. And I, I certainly understand what Mr. Diaz is saying, but I'd rather have us look at our investment in that piece of property as making it whole and usable again in a fashion that would be good for the city.
Mr. McCorsky, please.
As the TIF district proceeds, it hasn't been approved yet. It's gone through some portions. It still needs to come to council. It will come council next council meeting. But the, the investments would be remediation of the, the property and then investments into the mixed-use parts of the project. And the, the TIF plan has a estimated number of roughly $5 million. But that'll be up to council as that moves forward. And as the council looks at the, the TIF request and the development agreements.
Other questions or comments? I'll keep mine very brief. I think you've all heard them before. I am 100% supportive of this project. I really commend the developer and all those that are working with the developer for putting this many parcels together. It's by means no easy task. I used to, Mr. Lynder, I used to drive West Verona Avenue every day when I lived out in that area, and I still make a habit of getting out there quite a bit. There's certain, certainly are certain parcels here that are blighted. Not all of them, I would say, but many of them are. And for those of you that were around in the early to mid 2000s when we talked about the bar bill approach, when things happening on East Verona Avenue, and then the west end was being proposed, and we talked about that bar bill approach and, and both on South and, and North Main Street, that's happening. And this isn't going to be the last project that we see. This is a vote in support of this, is a vote for progress for the city of Verona. I just, I can't tell you how important I think that this is moving forward. So I would strongly encourage you to support this. Additional? Ms. Gasko, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would like to propose that we look at this as an opportunity to develop affordable housing strategies for the city. It keeps coming up over and over again. We're effectively displacing 23 families. And, you know, this whole project has benefits. Obviously, the environmental remediation is a great benefit, but we are effectively moving, getting rid of 23 affordable housing units. And I'm talking affordable like $800 to $900 rent for two bedrooms, which in Verona is really difficult to find. So going forward, I would really like us to look at, as a city, through the planning department, through us hopefully adopting it at some point, that we consider affordable housing strategies so that future developments truly have affordable units. You know, I'm just, I feel really strongly about that. I think I do support this project, but with the caveat that with all of the development we're doing for market-rate housing, market-rate apartments, focusing primarily on our epic population, that is not just Verona. I mean, Verona is not just epic. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Doyle, please.
Well, that's why in, in previous rounds of feedback, I think I mentioned that Lytech, this could be a great opportunity to have a Lytech project here in the city of Verona. Middleton does that extremely well, utilizing low-income housing tax credits, where you can have mixed-income developments. And I think that's something that's especially lacking in Verona. As alluded to earlier, you're lucky if you can come across a two-bedroom in Verona for 14 to 15. I know I'm paying about 16 right now a month for a two-bedroom. So 800 to 900, that's something that is quickly evaporating from the market. And again, market demands have a huge effect, vacancy rates. But again, utilizing tools that are out there, we can intentionally help create spaces for, you know, our, our teachers, our families, our public safety workers, you know, retail workers. That's been an ongoing problem here in the city of Verona, is businesses having to amend their hours because there's a lack of public transportation to connect people to jobs, and they can't afford to live in the city of Verona. It's affecting all areas of our community. So that's something that would make this project palatable for me.
Other questions or comments? Just, Ms. Ricky, please.
I just feel like I need to ritterate that I am not comfortable providing TIF money for the removal of families from their homes either. And I like the idea of you maybe setting the, being the, at the forefront of doing what these other older people have spoken about in order to create that actually affordable workforce housing in a new development. And then I too would, would love to support this project.
Other questions or comments? Mr. Sayer, please.
Just a couple of questions that Ms. Doyle had. Regarding the notice, we don't notify renters, we don't have their information. So we do post, obviously, then public notices in the paper, we post them in the required places. We put the signs on the property as well. We post the plans to the website. We send out an email on the website as well, too. So from a notice standpoint, that's how our, our department kind of handles that. Regarding the vacation of Top Avenue, that process will be driven by states- Regarding the vacation of Top Avenue, that process will be driven by state statutes, and there's two processes that may go. One is a 40-day type requirement with a public hearing. Forward development can't go forward with that until they actually own the property, so the owner's adjacent to the roadway after a request, either a discontinuance or the vacation of the road. So, that's why there's a condition in that approval, is because it can't be done until they own it. So we'll, we'll work out that requirement as the project goes forward. I think regarding just one comment, just on some of the comments tonight, I just want to be clear, the request tonight is nothing to do with the TIF. The request tonight is the land use and the project that's before here. I know there's been TIF discussed, I know that's a piece that's coming at some point, but I just want to be clear, the project itself, when looking at it from a planning and zoning standpoint, to be honest, should have nothing to do with the TIF itself. I know it factors into it, when you hear about it, it's all kind of there, but if there's concerns about the incentive and the public dollars, that's an appropriate discussion point as part of that developers' agreement. And that's part of the reason why there's a condition on this, that forward development should enter into a developers' agreement with the city. There's right-of-way dedication, there's TIF incentives as well, too. So I just want to be kind of clear in that, of, I know it's being discussed, but I would encourage you, I guess, to just look at the aspect of the use and the planning of this, and not so much as the public dollars, because that's a different conversation that the council still needs to have, and it hasn't been had.
Thank you. Ms. Doyle?
I'd just like to clarify that it wasn't any criticism of the way that the public hearing was communicated, it was just the fact that I was getting feedback from residents who were aware of the public hearing, saying that rental agents were saying that there was no proposed development on this site. So that's what it was. It's not a criticism of the city, or your processes, it sounds like communication has been clear on that end. It was just the denial of a process that has been very public that was troubling.
Thank you. Other questions or comments? Mr. McGilvery, please.
Yeah, I guess just from, to talk a little bit about the policy point of view, I'm having a hard time understanding how we think we're going to direct people to build something brand-new, and then provide it at 800 bucks a month for a two-unit. That's not realistic. I mean, the way, those particular properties, the reason they are at that rate is for a very specific reason. They're older, they tend to be a little bit rundown, and that's the way the market works. You don't build to the lowest common denominator and expect it to stay right there. That's, it's just going to get pushed down farther. The way I would see this is that you are bringing in, yes, you're bringing in a whole bunch more new apartments. You're supporting your downtown, which we've talked about numerous times, about finding ways to support our downtown. And as a higher-end apartment, that's, just by nature, is going to push an older apartment that may be on the cusp down into that lower range. That's just how it works. And I just have a real problem with the city attempting to drive, I've never seen it work. If you look at any place that tries to build strictly affordable housing, it becomes a problem right away, because that's, the lowest common denominator is not what we should be going for. I just don't understand that concept. I can, I can support the idea of affordable housing, I can support the idea of having that mixed use in your community, but that happens organically and naturally. We've been talking about organic, that's, it happens that way. It doesn't, you don't build it. Thank you.
There's a lot of comments I could make in addition to that, but I want to respect the agenda item, and that we stay specific to the PIP for this development. But I don't disagree with you. Other questions or comments? Ms. Riki, please.
I guess I'm wondering then, and I'm hoping this is directly related to the agenda item, but can Top Avenue apartments be taken out of the precise implementation plan?
Ron, do you want to speak to that?
That's actually a question that I've been asked before by Mr. Diaz there. We didn't originally approach those apartments as being part of the project. We started with the properties up front on Verona Avenue, but there's a significant cost to the environmental remediation component, and to the other infrastructure things that need to occur as a result of this project. And to support them, there's a balance of the financial part of the transaction that is needed in order to create the increment that is needed for all aspects of the project. So ultimately, and that related to the density, other things that came about, and so for the project to work overall, those properties are needed to be part of that. Now, I will comment in, to, as it relates to affordable housing, there, the, one of the reasons why there's only 23 units rented instead of 24, is because significant repairs would be needed to make it habitable. And there are others that are coming offline, that are going to be taken offline until those repairs are made. It's not that the housing is there right now. It may be affordable, but it does not mean that it's ideal. And we believe that we're helping in a variety of ways, and one of those is to create an excellent area for the city of Verona overall, and we will work hard with those residents to find them good housing. Thank you.
Thank you. Additional questions or comments? Seeing none, the motion before you is to approve Resolution Number R-17-044, with the, was it seven conditions? With the seven conditions outlined in the report. Seeing no further questions, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no?
No.
Motion carries on a five...
I have a favor. I have a favor. I want to make a request.
And the motion passes. I'm just getting caught up on my notes here.
Mr. Mayor, could you just clarify, how many votes you had?
I thought we had four. We had four, and then two noes, and one abstention.
Thank you. I, it just didn't sound that way, so...
So I took it as. All right, we are on Agenda Item 9B4. Ms. Sayer, please.
This is Resolution R-17-045, approving a general development plan for Festival Foods at 660 Hometown Circle that would allow for the construction of a 67,867-square-foot grocery store. The proposed general development plan, GDP, will allow for the construction of a 67,867 square-foot grocery store east of Farm and Fleet. Questions from the Plan Commission included questions about the recommended condition for the vacant store rehabilitation agreement. The Plan Commission held the required public hearing on September 5th of 2017, and voted four to zero to recommend for the approval of the GDP with the following conditions. One, the GDP shall become effective, one, the GDP shall become effective upon Festival Foods, the applicant acquiring the properties identified within the GDP. And two, prior to the GDP becoming effective, the city and Festival Foods shall enter into a store rehabilitation slash vacant store agreement.
Thank you, Ms. Sayer. Questions, comments, motions? Mr. Steiner, please.
Mr. Sayer, I had some questions from a few folks who are worried about those beautiful trees that are on this lot. Is there a way to save those trees and relocate them? Dig them up and move them, or are they just going to be destroyed? Do you know?
I think with the trees that are in the main development area, which is where the building is, and the loading areas behind the building, I think it's extremely difficult to save any of those trees. I think the ones on the perimeter, on the very northern edge, in the green area, and beyond our site, there's some very mature trees as well, to the north of the site. Obviously, we'll do everything we can to keep those that are on the perimeter that aren't in asphalt and buildable areas.
Any further follow-up, Mr. Steiner?
I'm disappointed.
Additional questions, comments, motions? Questions, comments, motions?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. McGilvery, please.
Again, for the sake of discussion, I'd like to make a motion to approve Resolution R-17-045, approving a general development plan for Festival Foods at 660 Hometown Circle that would allow for the construction of 67,867-square-foot grocery store with the conditions as noted by Mr. Sayer, two, to be exact.
We have a motion by Mr. McGilvery, is there a second? Second. Second by Mr. Linder. Mr. McGilvery, you are the author, anything to add?
Not at this point. I was kind of hoping that we'd have a discussion about it.
Questions or comments on the motion? Mr. Diaz, please.
Thank you. This is a question for Adam. I'm sorry, my packet's, I'm having issues loading this packet, there's a lot of stuff in it, but with Festival Foods, they sorted out the stuff with the landscaping, correct?
Ms. Sayer?
Correct. They are no longer requesting exemptions. That was an exemption that we talked about last time, in that they're now meeting that 25% requirement.
Excellent. My second question is, are they asking for any exemptions?
Ms. Sayer?
Yes, let me pull up my packet. So one of the exemptions is a setback exemption, so this is in the downtown overlay district, which has a minimum setback of 15 feet and a maximum setback of 25 feet. So they're requesting exemption to that maximum setback of 25 feet, in order to be consistent with Farm and Fleet. A second exemption is to the parking stall depth, they're actually making them slightly larger, that's to accommodate the loading of groceries in the back of cars. And then finally, the last exemption, which is escaping me, and I'm getting to it. Side yard was one? Correct. Side yard was one as well, with regards to a side yard setback with Farm and Fleet, and that's because there's a shared parking to the west as well, so there would be no setback to that. I believe that's all, three of them. Correct. And there'd be parking, one more thing, there'd be parking in the front of the building as well, too, which typically isn't allowed in the overlay district.
Mr. Diaz, please.
Thank you. I mean, I guess that's my last remaining issue with this, with this project, is the way the parking's laid out. I don't think I made it any secret that I'm unhappy, you know, well before my time with the project, on the whole planes project, and I voted against most of the stuff there, and I plan on voting against this one as well. I did want to say that I like the idea of the empty store condition. I know it was, drew some discussion with the Plan Commission, I don't, if Festival Foods comes in, I don't think it's going to be an issue, but I think it's a good way to protect, to protect the city from any, you know, potential blighted areas. So I just want to say, I really do like that, and, you know, if this does pass and Festival Food comes in, I wish them nothing but the best and success.
Thank you. Mr. Linder, please.
Thank you. So what, why so many parking spots? I tend to agree, looks, I mean, we require 227, you're asking for 389, and it's a, that's a big difference.
Yeah. My name is Mark Anderson, I live in Kenosha, Wisconsin, and I'm in the senior leadership group of Festival. Our business model is significantly different than most retail grocery stores, and the traffic counts that we generate tend to be significantly higher than stores of similar size. We would expect that, and we measure, generally, we measure things on a weekly basis, our sales and our customer count. We would expect that this store would open with about 17,000 guests or customers per week. And it doesn't come spread through all the hours of a week, you know, it comes in spikes when people, I think in a community like this, we would be very busy from 4:00 to 7:00, and then on Sundays and Saturdays would be big days for us there. You know, so you have big peaks of volume, big peaks of traffic at certain times, and then you have the seasonality effect as well. The other thing that's pretty unique about us is today, so much of the products that are sold in a grocery store are centrally produced, and then shipped to the stores. Our business model results in us producing the vast majority of the fresh foods we sell. What it does, it allows us to have very fresh product that we can make several times per day, to keep it fresh, not have to do things like add preservatives, and, you know, have that for our customers when they want to buy it, and have it to be very fresh. So we prepare an awful lot. We have very extensive kitchens in our delis, probably larger than anything any other retailer in the state would have, in terms of the type of cooking. We do preparation of entrees, of salad bars, of salads in our service cases, things like that, that are often centrally produced and shipped to the stores, we do in our stores. We have very extensive service, fresh meat and seafood. We do that all in-store, all that seafood preparation, the vast majority of seafood is flown in daily, so fresh, and it takes a considerable amount of handling and labor and people to do that. Same thing with our meat. Our bakeries are also, do very little, we don't do any central baking at all, it's all done in the store. The vast majority of the products are scratch. It takes a lot more people, a lot more labor, to produce the products that we sell. So you will see the employee count, or associate count, as we like to call it, significantly higher than typical 65,000-square-foot store. I was the president of a large retail business unit that covered 17 states before I came to work for Festival five years ago, and I can tell you that the employee count in this store will be about double what it would be in another 65,000-square-foot store that operated their business in a different way than we do. So we would, we would start the, this store with about 250 associates, and that would grow over time to somewhere around 300 associates, with about 80 to 100 being full-time, and the balance being part-time. You know, so that's a big part of the reason why the parking ratio, how we measure it, is five spaces per 1,000 square feet, why it gets us to that parking count that we need.
Mr. Linder?
So you're saying that if you end up with 300 employees, associates, 150 of them are what non-traditional store, or non-Festival Foods would probably not have, so the difference of roughly 160 units in the parking is to make up for those 150 employees?
Now, the 250...
Some of it? Yeah, those 250 employees, obviously, we're covering all the hours of a week, you know, we have stocking going on at night, things of that nature. But when you have the peaks in your business, you know, on Friday, Saturday, Sunday, or 4:00 to 7:00, and when you need a lot of people at the front end, and, you know, helping people with their groceries out to the lot, that's where you have those peaks, where it's not uncommon to have 90 to 100 associates in a store at a busy time. And unfortunately, you know, we encourage things like mass transit and carpooling, and, you know, bicycles and such, but still a significant amount of people do drive.
Mr. Linder?
So one of my, one of my comments from the last time we saw this was, I wasn't too fond of the way the front of the building looked, and there was like no windows or nothing, so I appreciate it that you guys put some windows in, it looks a lot nicer, in my opinion.
Yeah, I agree with you, I think it looks great.
I like that you did not ask for the exemption for landscaping as well, so I appreciate your comp, your explanation for the parking, and Mr. Diaz and I have talked about trying to reduce that in previous projects, so I think we're talking the same language on that one, but, and I think, I don't know, maybe it's Sayer answered this question, but how long is, this was originally thought of as a grocery store location, correct, when Farm and Fleet went in, is that correct?
Ms. Sayer, please.
That's correct. So when Farm and Fleet was initially discussed, they submitted a concept, there was a... there was a, you know, basic concept with not much detail on it, but they had boxes drawn in, and there was a box drawn on this property that said Grocery Store, and I believe it was 60,000 square-foot grocery store at that time, so, I mean, the request tonight is kind of consistent with what was initially contemplated by Farman Fleet.
Was that something that was approved by this body?
It wasn't approved, it was as part of that, part of the discussions that were being had, so, I mean, anytime anyone comes in, it was probably what their thoughts were on how it could be developed, but it wasn't formally approved, it was discussed in some fashion, which I wasn't here, so I can't speak to how it was discussed, but it was discussed somehow.
Is it on any formal plan from the city?
It's in the files, yeah, it's definitely in the files, it's a document.
Sorry, just like any kind of comprehensive plan or something that would?
No, no, it was not included there. I mean, it's a six-acre site though, so, I mean, I think the intent was always probably some type of large format type retailer.
Okay, thank you.
Further questions or comments? Ms. Gaskill, please.
Does staff have any concern with the exemptions requested?
Mr. Sayer, please.
No, we don't have any concerns, I think the reality with the, from our standpoint with the downtown overlay district and the requirement to that 25-foot setback, we think it'd be foolish to try to put a building that close when you have Farman Fleet that far back, so no, we don't have any concerns.
And then in terms of the dealing with stormwater and the wet ponds, what are those going to look like?
That's a detail that gets worked out at the PIP level, so this is step three of four, there's still a lot of step they'd have to go through. They have some initial, obviously some initial concepts of what the stormwater could look like, we haven't seen the stormwater management plans yet, but that's something that they would have to produce and the city engineer would review.
And presumably, if we have less parking and less pavement, we'd have smaller requirements of the stormwater ponds?
Mr. Sayer?
Generally, yes.
Thank you.
Other questions or comments? The motion before you is to approve Resolution Number R-17-045 with the contingencies that were mentioned in the report and made in the motion. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no?
Aye.
No votes, please raise your hand. Okay, motion passes five to two with Mr. Steiner and Mr. Diaz voting no. Motion passes. Nothing else from the planning commission, Mr. Sayer? Nope. Okay, we will now go to page two. Oh, I'm sorry, I was going to mention, the agenda item 9B5, that requires a public hearing and that wasn't noticed as such, so therefore, we are not going to be taking action on that this evening and will come back at a future meeting. Thank you, Mr. Linder, for mentioning that. So we are on item 9C, Joint Planning Committee. Mr. Sayer, please.
Thank you, this is Resolution R-17-046, approving an extraterritorial certified survey map creating three lots at 1997 County Highway PB. The proposed certified survey map, CSM, will create three lots at 1997 County Highway PB. Lot one of the CSM will contain the existing house, and lots two and three will contain future single-family houses. The proposed land division is located in the town of Verona and was reviewed by the Joint City Planning Committee on April 26, 2017, as required by the boundary agreement. The committee voted five to zero to recommend for the approval of the CSM.
Thank you, Mr. Sayer. Questions, comments, potential motions? Mr. Linder, please.
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution Number R-17-046, approving an extraterritorial certified survey map that creates three lots at 1997 County Highway PB in the town of Verona.
We have a motion by Mr. Linder, is there a second? Second by Ms. Ricky.
Were there some?
No contingencies on there. Questions or comments on the motion? Questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. That motion carries. Mr. Sayer, please.
Thank you, this is Resolution R-17-047, approving an extraterritorial certified survey map modifying the lot lines at 2009 Manhattan Drive in the town of Verona. The proposed certified survey map will modify the lots at 2009 Manhattan Drive, no additional lots are being created with the CSM. The proposed land division is located in the town of Verona and was reviewed by the Joint City Town Planning Committee on June 19 of 2017, as required by the boundary agreement. The committee voted four to zero to recommend for the approval of the certified survey map with no conditions.
Thank you, Mr. Sayer. Questions, comments, motions? Mr. Linder, please.
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution Number R-17-047, approving an extraterritorial certified survey map modifying the lot lines at 209 Manhattan Drive in the town of Verona.
We have a motion by Mr. Linder, excuse me, is there a second?
Second.
Who's second?
I did.
Ms. Gaskill, please. Questions or comments on the motion? Questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no, and that motion carries. Anything else from the Joint Planning Committee? Excuse me, thank you. Next, we have Public Safety and Welfare, who's taking that this evening? Ms. Ricky, please.
Under item 91, I make a motion to approve a special event permit application for Fall Fest on Friday, September 29, 2017, from 4:00 to 11:00 p.m. from Lee Jordan, Verona Area Chamber of Commerce.
We have a motion by Ms. Ricky, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Gaskill, Ms. Ricky?
Lee Jordan has applied for a special event permit for the Chamber of Commerce Fall Fest to be held on Friday, September 29, 2017, from 4:00 to 11:00 p.m. at Veterans Park. This is the first year for this event, and a drawing of the event was included in the application, and a temporary Class B and Class B retailers license would also be required for this event, and the Public Safety and Welfare Committee moved to recommend that the common council approve this with the following contingencies. One, that the petting zoo occurs with a licensed business. Two, that the fire department issues a permit for the outdoor fire pit. And three, the approval from Parks Department for providing tractor or horse-drawn hay rides in the park.
So Ms. Ricky, you want to include those conditions with your motion?
My motion, yes, please.
And Ms. Gaskill, you agree?
Yes.
Okay. Questions or comments on that motion? Mr. Diaz, please.
Thank you, I just want to be on record for saying I think this is a wonderful idea. Fall is the best season, so it's great that we're having an outdoor celebration.
Thank you. Other questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor of approving a special event permit application for Fall Fest signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no, and that motion carries. Ms. Ricky, please.
Thank you, under item 92, I move approval for, make motion to approve an application for a temporary Class B, Class B retailers license from the Verona Area Chamber of Commerce for same event, Fall Fest, on September 29, from 4:00 to 11:00 at Veterans Park.
We have a motion by Ms. Ricky, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. McGilvery, Ms. Ricky?
So this would just allow beer, three varieties from Hop House, I believe, to be served within the fenced area at this festival.
Any questions or comments on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion to approve an application for a temporary Class B and Class B retailers license, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no, and that motion carries. Anything else from Public Safety and Welfare Committee? All right, thank you. We are on Public Works, Sword and Water, who's handling that this evening?
I will, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. McGilvery?
Thank you. Under item 9E1, I'll make a motion to approve change order number one for project IDs 2016-103, 2016-114, and 2016-122, traffic signal projects in the amount of $27,741.41.
We have a motion by Mr. McGilvery, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Diaz, Mr. McGilvery?
Thank you. Parisi Inc. has completed the projects outlined in the previous statement, which included the installation of traffic signals at three intersections within the city of Verona. Change order number one is to rectify the as-built quantities as required for fuel conditions.
Thank you, Mr. McGilvery, we have a motion and a second. Are there questions or comments on the motion? Questions or comments? Seeing none, the motion is to approve the change order number one in the amount of All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no, and that motion carries. We are on Agenda Item E2, 9E2, Mr. McGilvery?
Thank you. Let me just get the amount here. All this time, and I thought I would have had that lined up. Too much paperwork.
The number is $49,938.1.
That's excellent, that's exactly what I have here, Mr. Mayor, thank you. So at this point, I will make a motion to approve change order number two for project ID 2015-104 Downtown Streetscape Stage Two and Three in the amount of $49,937.1.
We have a motion by Mr. McGilvery, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Diaz, Mr. McGilvery?
Yes, in the way of explanation, Parisi has substantially completed the downtown Streetscape project, the project will be closed out after punch items are addressed and final landscaping quantities are verified. Change order number two is to rectify as-built quantities for all roadway, lighting, storm, sewer, and utility items.
Thank you, Mr. McGilvery. Questions or comments on the motion? Questions or comments? Seeing none, the motion before you is to approve change order number two in the amount totaling All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no, that motion carries. Mr. McGilvery, please.
Yes, just before we move on to the next one, I asked Mr. Jacobson to kind of go back through his documents, and since we're closing this out, finishing up the downtown Streetscape, which I hope everybody agrees looks great, I thought maybe you could just talk a little bit about where we came in with our budget and our timing.
Sure. Mr. Jacobson, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As the budget approval for 2017 and the previous years that this project was budgeted for, we were at $4,035,000 at the, when we took the bonds out this past summer, I decreased what we actually needed for the project by 135,000. So that put us at a project budget of $3,900,000, and my estimated projections for project completion are going to be roughly 200,000 under that. So that gives a quick summary of the planned budget as of last fall to where we're at today, with construction being completed and the project almost being closed out.
Any questions for Mr. Jacobson on that project closeout? Not seeing any, thank you for that update, appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right, Mr. McGilvery, please.
Under item 9E3, I'll make a motion to approve Amendment Number Four for the 2014 municipal stormwater services in the amount of $14,500.
We have a motion by Mr. McGilvery, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Diaz, Mr. McGilvery?
Thank you, Amendment Number Four is for additional design services and permitting efforts to complete the contract documents for the following projects, 2017-107 West Park Basin, which is on Maple Road, and Cross Country Heights, and then 2017-109 Lincoln Street Channel Phase Two. Additional permitting efforts were required by the Wisconsin Department of Natural Resources and the United States Army Corps of Engineer for both projects.
Thank you, Mr. McGilvery. Questions or comments on the motion? Questions or comments? Not seeing any, all those in favor of approval of Amendment Number Four for the 2014 municipal stormwater services signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no, and that motion carries. Mr. McGilvery, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Under item 9E4, I'll make a motion to approve a partial release of platted public utility easement at Cross Point Estates.
We have a motion by Mr. McGilvery, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Diaz, Mr. McGilvery, please.
If I could just ask, Mr. Jacobson, I believe there are conditions associated with that, if he could highlight those, I want to, go ahead, actually.
Thanks, Mr. McGilvery. Currently, there was an existing plat at Cross Point Estates that had two utility easements identified on them, and with the replating of that property, we need those existing easements released, and there is a new easement on the new plat that will justify the needs of any future utilities within that development, which is strictly just a stormwater easement, but the easements that are current right now on the old plat need to be released by all utilities that could have interest in there, such as Alliant, MG&E, TDS, so we need the developer, we'll have to get releases from them for final completion of those easements being released.
Thank you, Mr. Jacobson. Not seeing any questions or comments? Any other questions? We do have a motion for approval of the partial release of platted public utility easement at Cross Point Estates. Questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no, and that motion carries. Mr. McGilvery, anything else from Public Works, Sword and Water?
I'll, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much, we are on Old Business. Go ahead, Mr. Steiner.
Mr. Jacobson, do we have an update on silent pond cleanup yet?
Mr. Steiner, I got that programmed in the budget for 2018.
So we got to wait another whole year?
Unfortunately, yeah.
All right. Thank you. Old Business, discussion and possible action regarding selection of a city council representative to the planning commission. Approval of this requires a minimum of six votes. Are there any nominations at this point? Ms. Dow?
I nominate Alder Diaz.
Mr. Diaz has been nominated, are there any additional nominations? Mr. McGilvery?
I'll nominate Mr. Linder.
Mr. Linder has been nominated, are there any other nominations for planning commission? Any other nominations? All right, I will close the nominations, and I will ask the clerk to read the roll, please.
Alder Steiner.
Alder Linder.
Alder Touche, sorry. Alder Diaz.
Alder Diaz.
Alder Doyle.
Diaz.
Alder Gaskill.
Alder Diaz.
Alder Linder.
Linder.
Alder McGilvery.
Alder Linder.
Alder Ricky.
Alder Diaz.
And the motion fails. We are on New Business, discussion, I should, I'm sorry, I should ask if there are any other nominations.
He did.
No, I mean, any other consideration, but, none, all right. New Business, discussion and possible action regarding approval of operator licenses. Ms. Clark, please.
I have operator license applications for Connie Andrew for Pasquale's Cantina, Guy Evans IV for the Drafthouse, and Michael Filer as an independent.
You have heard the applicants, what's your pleasure?
Move approval.
We have a motion by Mr. Linder, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Doyle. All those in favor of approval of the application signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no, and that motion carries. We are on to announcements, are there any announcements this evening? Announcements? I have one, and that is, we are going to try something new this year. We had discussions with both the city of Pittsburgh and the town of Verona, and normally, we have the annual meeting for Fitzverona on a Thursday evening, we are going to move that to Monday, October 16, at 7:00 p.m., so it'll be the third Monday, and again, the city of Pittsburgh and the town of Verona have both agreed to give that a shot. So the meeting is seven o'clock on October 16, the annual meeting for Fitzverona EMS, I would ask that you please put that on your calendars. It'll be at the fire EMS station.
Can we get an email reminder, please?
We can do that.
Thank you.
Any other announcements this evening? Any other announcements? If not, a motion to adjourn would be in order? We have a motion by, who was it, Mr. Diaz, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Ricky, all those in favor of adjournment signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no, and that motion carries, we are adjourned. Thank you, everyone.